Good.
Evening. It's 6:00 PM on December thirteenth and I'm going to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to inform everyone that the meeting will be televised on live Mashpee TV. Next, if everyone will stand will say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this evening John Ferbush and Ron Bondi are absent. So tonight we'll have our two regular members.
Your mic not working?
I don't know.
You get two, so play all the both. I almost used flashing.
Our regular members as well as our alternates will be sitting on our cases. I think the regular members will sit on all the cases and three of the alternates will sit. Jim, would you like to open the first hearing?
Opening continued hearing on sixty-six Massasoan Avenue. Owners Patrick M. and Sharon M. O'Connor request a variance of the rear property line under section one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck on property located in our three zoning district, map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Massachusetts. And there's been a request by the attorney to continue. Oh, this was requested by the attorney as a continuance from the October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen meeting.
Okay.
Thanks again to chairman members of the board. I think we'd like to defer this. We're on the agenda later on a request for specific finding because subsequent to that matter having been filed, the O'Conners came to see me and I believe that they can obtain and achieve the same result can be done with a specific finding as opposed to a variance. So it is likely that we will withdraw the variance request.
Are you gonna withdraw tonight?
Yes, we would.
Okay. Any objections to that? Make a motion.
I make a motion that we withdraw the application for sixty-six Massasoan Ave. Owners Patrick and Sharon M. O'Connor for variance of the rear property line under section one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck on property located in an R-three zoning district, map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Mass. There's two. Should read them both? One's a written finding, one's a variance. Am I withdrawing?
The specific finding is on later in the agenda.
Coming later.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
On that case, I failed to mention. It'll be the five of us. Sharon, you're gonna be stepping down on that case, but I'll assign you to next. Do we need to sign?
No.
Jim, would you like to read the next continued hearing, please?
Continued hearing of twenty-nine Overlook Noel Road. Owners Frederick J. and Linda Nadev request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to raise or replace a single-family dwelling and deck on property located in an R-three zoning district and the Pompaneset Overlake District. Map one-one-eight, parcel three-three, Mashpee, Mass. And this has been, was continued from November eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. This case has been quite complicated as time has gone on. There are several potential options available to the applicant tonight. The first, number one, it should be noted that there is a current outstanding appeal of the Conservation Commission's ruling to approve this property. There's also been a lawsuit initiated against the Mashpee Board of Health for their ruling on this property. So those two, those two items are still outstanding. If we were to hear this case tonight, it would be impossible to approve it with those two outstanding cases. The applicant would therefore normally have the option to continue it. However, we are approaching the hundred-day maximum time limit for an application and a normal continuance would not be applicable. We could hear the case and make a ruling. The applicant could withdraw without prejudice and refile it. And there's a final option available to the applicant and that's to continue it under special circumstances. And that type of continuation would have to have the agreement and signed off by the applicant as well as the zoning board. So if the applicant would like to make his pleasure known, we could hear the case or we could continue it with special exception.
I have executed a document extending that one-hundred day period so the board would not be in jeopardy of having granted any permit or any decision by default. So we are hoping that the matter will be put over to the January tenth meeting day.
January tenth. Does this need to be signed by all of the?
Yeah.
Okay, it will be the five of us sitting on this case as well.
Does it make a motion for anything?
We need to make a motion to approve the request for an extension. First, is there any comments from the? Seeing none.
Was there a second?
I haven't made the motion yet.
Hasn't made a motion.
Approve.
Slow down, Jim.
We're gonna extend to January tenth.
Extension of the application? All right. I'd like to make a motion that we allow the applicant to, and to approve, the applicant to extend the applicant, the application for an extension until the January tenth meeting. All right?
That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen. Here you go, sir. Just wait for this to go down. I'm just, there's a few things on this one, okay?
You don't need to sign that, Jim? Okay, sitting on the next case will be Sharon. You'll be sitting on this one. Jim, would you read the next new hearing, please?
Who's not sitting on it?
Jim is not.
Okay. I don't know if you said that.
Opening the hearing thirty-six Riverside Road. Owner James M. McAdon requests a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition and extension to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district. Map one nineteen, parcel-
Are your mics, get the mic a little closer to you. Getting flashed.
Let's see, map one nineteen, parcel one-twenty-six, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Any other applicant? Please step up and provide your name and-
I'm Jim McAdon from thirty-six Riverside Road. I'm requesting to basically square off my property. I don't want to do it in addition.
Confused by this existing. Can you just clarify to me what's existing and what's the addition? Because this plot plan isn't really telling me.
So on the, on the plot plan, as you can see, the, it's almost like a little-
The jog, the ten-foot by five-foot jog?
Yep.
You just-
It's like, yeah, one-twenty-eight by-
Okay, so you just want to square that off?
Yes.
Okay, because there's that line going through the middle. Looks like the whole thing's an addition. So the addition's five foot three by ten foot eight?
Yeah, well, that's the existing property there, so what we would do is we want to square that off and we're gonna add a bedroom above, too.
Okay, well, that's. But there's already, there's a porch slab there now.
Yes.
And that's the same place the addition's gonna go?
Yes, uh-huh.
Are there any posts or any, is there a roof above that? Or is it just an open?
Just open, yes.
Okay.
Comments from?
Reason is, yes, if there was a post and a structure above it, it wouldn't be an addition. You'd be all set.
Right, I mean, there's, there's like-
Well, you wouldn't be all set, but it would be, it would be-
There's like an old post there, but-
Yeah. But it's just a deck. There's no structure above. You're not supporting anything above.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so it's just squaring that off?
Yes.
Which it's going from thirteen point six-two to, so it's not getting any more non-conforming on that side? And it's not getting any more non-conforming. Lot coverage, good question. Doesn't say. We need to know what the lot coverage is of the structure on the property? With the addition being added to it? Plot plan does not have any of that information. Mary Ann, do you remember if you requested that to the engineer? That's kind of an important factor that we need to know. There's a twenty percent lot coverage maximum.
The lot itself is a-
Yeah, unfortunately, we need it like from an engineer.
Oh, I see.
You can't just, I mean, it'd be great if you told us. I trust you, but I don't trust you. An engineer has to put it on the plan saying, this is what the lot size is. This is what the lot coverage of the house is now. With the addition, this is what the lot coverage will be. We just needed to have it clarified.
Okay.
So how do you want to handle that?
We're gonna have to continue.
Mike has a-
I can throw another option out there.
Okay.
If the board feels in granting it with the condition that the applicant has to submit a site plan with that information on there, as long as he doesn't exceed the twenty percent lot coverage,
Yeah.
I can go ahead and pursue the permit.
Okay.
But if he doesn't have it, either way, he's gonna have to re-advertise it because right now, all he's asking for is a written finding, not relief from lot coverage.
Yeah.
That's right.
So either way-
Okay, keep in mind when you talk to the engineer,
Yep.
Lot coverage, when you say the structures, it has to include that shed, too.
Okay.
That's part of your lot coverage.
Okay.
I think you're okay. The house without the shed, definitely.
Yeah.
That's probably okay. With a shed-
The shed is like-
You could take that down. That might, if that becomes an issue, have him do that separately and you can know if you're over the twenty percent. Because you might want to consider that when you come back.
Sure.
We have to put that in as, as a condition, too. All right, I got some notes.
So it's conditioned that we receive a certified plot plan stamped by an engineer indicating present and proposed lot coverage. And if the lot coverage on that stamped plan, it's conditioned that the lot, the stamped plan shows that the lot coverage with the proposed addition is less than twenty percent.
It does not exceed twenty percent, yeah. Semantics.
Does not exceed twenty percent. I like your wording better.
There you go.
Comments from-
Yeah, why don't you do that while I do all this?
All right. Anybody want to read in some of the comments from other departments? It's gonna be conditioned on departmental.
I have all these. I just have to add that in there.
Sharon, you wanna read in the comments from the inspections department?
Okay. The inspections department, thirty-six Riverside Road. The area is zone R-three and is also within pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. The application, applicant is seeking a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen to allow for an addition and extension to an existing single-family dwelling. The side yard is one point three eight feet short of the fifteen-foot side yard requirement. The front setback of forty feet is short twenty-one point sixty-three feet. The board needs to determine if the proposed addition would make this single family go more non-conforming or not.
Conservation comments, I'll read it. No wetlands jurisdiction on this property, on this lot. Board of Health comments. Thirty-six Riverside Road. Septic inspection report on file covers the requirement for increase in flow. Nineteen ninety-five septic permit was approved for three bedrooms. Floor plans have been reviewed and are acceptable for three bedrooms. Any other comments of anybody?
Conservation?
I read that. Okay, anybody in the audience have any comments?
That's it. I'm gonna try. I apologize. I'm not usually the motion guy. I make a motion that we approve the following. Thirty-six Riverside Road owner James M. McAdon has requested a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition and extension to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one nineteen, parcel one-twenty-six, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law forty-eight, section six. The certified plot plan is MBLU one nineteen dash one-twenty-six, thirty-six Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass. dated October second, two thousand seventeen. Scale one inch equals thirty feet, drawn by RBS, job number S-three-five-six, DWG CPP. Eastbound land surveying incorporated P.O. Box four-four-two, Forestale, Mass. Signed by Rob Sykes, PLS ten-two, two-seven, two thousand seventeen, registered land surveyor. The floor plans are thirty, for thirty-six Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass. First floor depicting kitchen, living room, mechanical bedroom two and bedroom three. Conditioned upon all department comments read into the record and conditioned upon the applicant supplies a certified engineer's plan showing the lot coverage with the existing structures and proposed additional structures to show the less than twenty percent lot coverage of structures to the building department before he'll receive a building permit, before a building permit is issued. Okay?
Yeah. That's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as soon as you get that to me, as soon as I get things processed? Because also when I get that plan, I'm gonna have to notify the chair that's in my office and so they can come down and verify my figures.
Okay, great. I'll check with them tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sixteen, other ones?
Need one more step, please?
I threw one my step down.
Becoming like somebody I know.
Yeah, I know. Easily, easily done.
Open these pages.
Yeah, except for-
Yeah, all moved on. Yeah, there's a I just, what happened to the? Oh, you said, okay.
Ready's good.
There you go.
Okay. Brad, you're gonna step down on this one, okay? Next continued hearing, Jim?
This is a new hearing.
I'm sorry, new hearing?
Opening the hearing on one seventy, one forty-one, James Circle. Owner Joyce L. Vandermees requests a special permit under one seventy-four dash forty-five point four for the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in an R-five zoning district. Map seventy-one, parcel one-eighty-three, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Do you have any?
Hey, everyone. I'm Jan Spenderme. I'm owner of one forty-one, James Circle. And I'm asking for a permit to be able to rent the pre-existing apartment that was never fully sanctioned from the previous owners.
Did you just purchase the property?
I purchased the property last June. Under the guise that it was a legal apartment, since found out it wasn't, I actually went through a lot of, a lot of water damage in the house. When I purchased it in three weeks, so I prepared all of that, all everything I could to include the apartment that was not up to code.
Okay.
And now I'm asking for the permission to be able to rent it. It has to take, it's not outside of the lines of the house. It's near the door to the house in the lower level.
Sure. Just so you know, both the inspections department and fire department have done inspections during the various phases of the repair. So everything's up to code. It is quite obvious. I was out there prior to the start of the work. That was all pre-existing, so it's not like this all of a sudden appeared overnight.
Right.
So it was there. It was quite evident and-
The only change I made was to the floor plan, which I think you were looking at there.
The proposed basement, was this proposed?
Because when the cause of the water problems, I lost interest in the internal walls. And so we changed the floor plan because to make it easier.
This is existing and just changed. So egress is all good?
Yes.
All that part's all good? Okay. As far as, as far as what accessory apartments require, this fits?
It, it fits it. I mean-
I'm not gonna sit doing the calculations and everything if you're ready.
Either way, I mean, if the previous owner had sort of documented as, you know, according to the town's bylaw, a new owner has to come back before-
No matter what?
No matter what.
Yeah.
So she's following the procedures, so.
Okay, but the previous owner never did, as far as we know? Okay.
And have we, has somebody done all the calculations to make sure that they conform to all of the?
They never filed. They never recorded it.
They never recorded it, so they didn't-
Oh.
They filed for-
So it got approved, but they never recorded it?
Right, this was an O-one?
My understanding was not approved. They never had any of the inspections done. I have done all of that.
Oh, it didn't get approved at a, it went to zoning?
No, it went to zoning board appeals.
Yeah.
It never got reported and there was no records of any permits or inspections whatsoever.
But it was approved or do we know if it was approved? Okay, it was approved.
Back in O-one, but they-
But they never recorded it. They stopped right there.
They never recorded, but none of the inspections have been done.
No, because they never pulled the permit.
They never pulled a permit. They just went and did it.
They got it approved and for whatever reason, they just stopped it.
They just figured that's all they needed.
Okay.
The questions, the questions I would have, I would like to answer. Maybe you can answer them because you've been there. Is that it meets all of the conditions under one seventy-four forty-five four. Just generally speaking, I can go, go through them. That it's secondary to the, to the main property.
Yes, it is.
It's owner occupied. The main property is owner occupied?
Yes, I know that, the main, yeah.
It's not less, how, how large is the actual apartment?
It's really small. I can't, it looks small.
The tier, I think it's something like a percentage. It would have to be nine hundred square feet. It does not. It does not, it, within your-
It doesn't have that calculation on here.
So it's under forty percent?
Yes, yes.
And it's more than three hundred square feet, though?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to get this all on the record.
No, that's fine.
What's the condition that it meets?
Conditioned on that it meets all the requirements of one seventy-four forty-five four, forty-five dot four.
I'm sorry, what's the number again?
One seventy-four dash forty-five dot four. But I want to talk about it, too.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So that we make sure that we don't just say it does conform without asking the questions. It's, two bedrooms or less?
Yes.
There's specific parking for the accessory apartment?
And there's a specific driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one bedroom.
Okay. And you do know that the, this permit, if granted, runs with the, with the owner of the property? If you were to sell the property, the buyer would have to come in and renew the special permit?
Do exactly what you're doing, basically.
Yes.
I think that covers it, but just have that in the-
Yeah. About the secondary, if she sells it, do I have to put that in there?
No, it's, it's in, that it does conform with all seventy-four.
Okay. Comments from the-
Oh, comments from other departments. I think we do.
I get off reading those.
Do you want to read in the Board of Health comments?
Who? Webber wants to do it.
Board of Health. One forty-one, James Circle. Comments, septic is approved for three bedrooms. Submitted floor plans are approved for three bedrooms. Septic was installed in two thousand sixteen, so certificate of compliance is good for two years for approved building permit.
Are we assuming the house is two bedrooms, then? If that, if it's approved for three, that's considered, is that to be part of the bedroom?
That's for the Board of Health.
Okay, that's one, all right. They're not gonna sign off on it anyway until-
Correct.
Okay. There's a conservation comment.
Conservation?
No wetlands jurisdiction on this lot.
Perfect.
Wasn't much of a comment, but it was a comment.
No. And the inspections department comments?
Um, one forty-one James Circle, Board, oh, it's Board of Health. Um, the area is zone R three and is also written within pre-contact archaeology sensitivity, listed as both high and moderate. They are seeking a special permit under one seventy-four dash forty-five point four of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment. The town indi, records indicate there is already an apartment there. It is listed as A on file.
I put that on there, just to let you know that this is not something she did.
Something she just did.
It's already been there, the town's recognized it's been there, even though, uh, the previous owners did not record the D, permits weren't...
Gotcha.
But, other departments, um, uh, the assessors knew it was there as well as, uh, GEO, so...
Okay.
DPU, uh, DPW, excuse me?
There you go, comment?
I believe so.
Oh, yeah, they do.
You don't have to read the top, just the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Top was an inspection of the wrong property, so...
Oh, okay. I visited the above property. Currently, there is not sufficient off-street parking for an accessory apartment. I do not recom...
That's, I think that's the incorrect part because you did the wrong property.
Oh, no, yeah, 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 it's the other way around. Yeah, you gotta read the top one.
I looked at the wrong property.
It looks like...
It looks like that was the wrong one.
No, I gotcha.
There is sufficient off-street parking for the proposed apartment as the second driveway was installed. The driveway was installed, however, without the curb cut permit from the DPW and does not comply with the town's requirements. Please condition any approval on the applicant obtaining a curb cut permit from the DPW and complying with the conditions of said permit.
May, may I say something?
Certainly.
I did not put that road in. That road, that driveway was in when I purchased the house.
Mm-hmm.
If I need to pay for the permit to get it approved, I will do that, but that is not my error.
Okay, the, the...
Previous owners.
Previous owners.
I, I understand, but it's gonna be, the, the approval of this would be conditioned on that being done.
And I said, I, I knew that coming into here tonight, and I said that I would do that. Um, I tried to sort that out prior to, and apparently I wasn't allowed to do that until after I seen all of you.
That's right. That would be a condition.
Gotcha. All right, comments?
Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the board?
So, there is, there isn't a finished second floor, because I drove by, it was a Cape style house.
No, there's a, well, it's a, it's a walkout ranch, I guess, a raised ranch, so the back is a walkout. So there's a, in the walkout area and the rear part.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was...
It's probably a split level, if it's a raised ranch, yeah. All right, we're good.
So there's no bedrooms up, it's just the...
Well, it's, yeah, it's a ranch on a lower level.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve. One forty-one James Circle, owner Janice L. Van Dermy.
Dermy?
Dermy, I apologize. Request a special permit under section one seventy-four dash forty-five point four of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in R five, R five zoning district. Is that right? R five?
R five.
All right.
Yeah.
Map seventy-one parcel one eighty-three Mashpee, Mass. Um, under the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of the special permit under Mass General Law forty A, section nine. The board has determined that all the applicant meets all, that the applicant meets all conditions for the accessory apartment under section one seventy-four dash forty-five point four, specifically item wa, I or one?
For what?
I don't know, it says specifically item, looks like an I, item I, of the town of Z, Mashpee zoning bylaws. It's I? The guys have it. Proposed septic system upgrade plan. One forty-one James Circle Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Capewide Enterprises. One fifty-three Commercial Street Mashpee, Mass, Engineering by Engineering Works Incorporated. Twelve West Crossfield Road, Forestale, Mass, scale one inch, she goes twenty feet. Drawn by PTM, job number one oh one dash sixteen, date one twenty-five sixteen. Checked by PTM. Sheet number one of two stamped by P T T. McEntee. Civil Registered Professional Engineer, number three five one zero nine. Proposed renovation house plan for Janice Van Dermy. One forty-one James Circle Mashpee, Mass. By Cape Cab Designs, I think that's supposed to be Cape Card Design, I could be wrong.
Cape Card.
Yeah, Cape Card Design, P O Box eight zero six Marston's Mills. Scale quarter inch, she goes one foot, date nine eleven two thousand sixteen, revised... There's no date, so, uh, drawing number eight oh one, drawing number eight oh two. Existing first floor and proposed first floor plan. A zero three existing basement apartment, proposed basement apartment. A zero four existing house, foundation frame on left side, frame of front. A oh five, nailing schedule, residential energy efficiency details. Conditioned upon all department, comments read into the record. And to meet all requirements of section, of the zoning bylaws, section one seventy-four dash forty-five point four, the applicant must apply for a DPW curb cut permit.
Yes, I understand, I will.
Second.
I don't think anybody, did you say, okay, second?
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any one more steps, please?
Another set of drawings.
Just, okay, I'm starving, I'm staring at the muffin. Banana bread, whatever it is.
No dinner, huh?
No, hungry.
Your body. What's this? Okay. Somehow feels better.
It was in that bag, I checked.
Yeah.
We got the approval? Do you have that?
Did I?
Nope.
All right, we'll let it go this time. It all starts with you, getting it on the right line.
I screwed up. Everyone does. Now it's up to you.
Yes, I know.
Next one.
I don't know if I've ever done that. I might have. Did I do it once? I might have. All right, I did.
Well, soon as that's back, we can start. Okay. Jim, could you do the next, uh, new hearing?
Opening the hearing on one fifty-three Main Street. Owner Elliot A. Avant requests a special permit under one seventy-four dash forty-five point four with the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in an R five zoning district. Map thirty-seven, parcel fifty-four, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Do we have anybody here?
He's not here.
He doesn't think he's here.
He's not here.
Well, you know who it is?
I know, I know.
Okay.
He's not here.
So what's the board's, do you want to do a continue?
We can continue it.
We have to look at it.
There's nothing to rule on, so let's continue it to the January tenth hearing.
I make a, I make a motion that we continue. One fifty-three Main Street, owner Elliot L. Avant, request for a special permit under section one seventy-four dash forty-five point four of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in R five zoning district, map thirty-seven parcel fifty-four Mashpee, Mass, till January tenth?
Right. And if they're not here on the tenth, we will deny it.
If they're not here on the tenth, we'll deny it.
I, I wouldn't, that's not part of your motion, is it?
I think it is.
Yeah.
It is part of the motion.
Yeah. That's why I had it. Doesn't need to look like that.
That's why I said...
Yeah, he seconded it, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continued. Nothing to sign?
No.
Okay. Next, continue, uh, new hearing, please. Quail Hollow.
Is it Quail Hollow?
Quail.
Quail.
Opening the hearing for the sixth, Quail Hollow Road. Owner Michael Cusack requests a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for a kitchen and living room addition to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in... In R five zoning district. Map fifty-eight, parcels fifty-four and fifty-five, Massachusetts, uh, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Uh, received a letter from owner requesting continuance until February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we'll make a motion on, oh, do you wanna read the letter into the, do I read this into the record? I'll just, yeah, can somebody read that in? Somebody you can read.
Requesting a continuance to the February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen Mashpee zoning board of appeals, currently CPA, public hearings for the following new hearings currently scheduled for Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. The first, forty-six Quail Hollow Road, owner Michael Cusack, requests a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for a kitchen and living room addition to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in R five zoning district. Uh, map fifty-four, parcels fifty-four and fifty-five Massachusetts, uh, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Uh, also, uh, forty-six Quail Hollow Road, owner Michael Cusack, requests a variance of the front side setbacks under, uh, section one seventy-four dash seventeen and section one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for a kitchen and living room addition to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in R five zoning district, map fifty-eight, parcels fifty-four and fifty-five in Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'm requesting this continuance, continuance because my understanding that the ZBA will not hear my request until, uh, the merger of the two lots is, two lots involved as approved by the Mashpee Planning Board has been recorded. I have begun the process with Landic, with Land Court, but they have advised, due to current workload, they cannot bring, begin the review process for at least three weeks uh, from receipt of all the necessary documentation. I will keep the ZBA informed of our pro, uh, progress in this manner, these matters. Respectfully, Michael Cusack, signature, uh, printed Michael Cusack, P O Box six forty-one, uh, Mashpee, Massachusetts, zero four, uh, zero two six four nine, uh, twelve six seventeen. Recorded by the town clerk on December sixth, two thousand seventeen, uh, at, uh, two, twenty-five P M.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue that?
That first one, we, we're gonna vote on the first one. And, um, make a motion on the second one, and it'll be the same letter.
Okay.
We won't have to read that anymore, so...
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the first one.
What's the date it's gonna continue to?
February...
Oh, it's right here. Uh, make a motion that we continue forty-six Quail Hollow Road, owner Michael Cusack. His request of a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen and section one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for kitchen and living room addition to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in an R five zoning district. Map fifty-eight, parcels fifty-four and fifty-five Mashpee, Mass. To the hearing on February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Have a second?
Yeah, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing, uh, on sixty-six Massasoit Avenue. Owners Sharon and Patrick O'Connor, request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck to an existing single-family dwelling on property located in R three zoning district. Map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
The book is here.
I didn't bought a batch, huh? From sixty-six Masssoit Avenue.
Wait a minute. I don't know if these are all different. I'm assuming they are.
I'll share that one with you.
Okay.
The smaller one, looks like the big, the bigger one is enough.
The book, Jim?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Corain and I represent the O'Connors in connection with this request for a specific finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen. Uh, earlier this evening, we withdrew the variance request because I believe that the board has the authority and the discretion to grant the relief, uh, that we have requested uh, pursuant to that particular section of the bylaw. Uh, just to give the board a brief indication, a copy of the site plan, uh, we have here and that we have submitted. Uh, you see the existing dwelling is situated on a Connor lot at the Connor or Massasoit Avenue and Secana Drive. The area that I have highlighted in yellow is the proposed deck that the O'Connors would like to add to the norvally side of that structure. As you can see, the existing structure fails to comply with the current day setback requirements from both Massasoit Ave and Secana Drive. Uh, in fact, for Massasoit Ave, the, the dwelling sits only about three feet, uh, from, uh, Massasoit and currently sits twenty-five feet from Secana Drive. So we have a non-conforming front yard setback, uh, and we are seeking to, uh, uh, further encroach into that front yard, uh, by adding the deck to the norvally side of the structure. As proposed, uh, that, uh, deck, which is about sixteen by twenty-five, will, uh, come to within, uh, nine point two feet of the, uh, front yard setback line. Uh, and however, there is an additional ten feet, uh, to the paved surface of the road, so the end of that deck will probably be somewhere in the vicinity of nineteen feet plus, uh, off that particular roadway. If you've had the opportunity to review, uh, the photographs and had the opportunity to go out to the site, you can see that the dwelling itself is, uh, sitting quite high, uh, off the, uh, off the roadway uh, as it relates to Secana. And as a general rule, as I've indicated in my written remarks, uh, we have these front yard setbacks to provide some degree of uniformity within neighborhoods and also to provide, uh, appropriate, uh, site, uh, distances as they relate to safe travel pedestrian and vehicular, uh, along Connor lots. I suggest that the fact that this deck itself will be sitting so high, uh, off the road that coming to within that nine feet of that front yard property line uh, and taking into consideration the additional ten feet to the paved surface of the road, uh, that we will be not in any way interfering with the, uh, site distances and the safe movement of traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular. And as you could see in the photographs that I, I did provide, you have a pretty clear view, uh, from up in that area uh, as to how traffic could negotiate that corner without interference notwithstanding the, uh, the front deck. Uh, the board is well aware of the standard that would be applied. I also provided the board... I also provided the board, one of those photographs there is a photograph of the adjacent property which is situated in this location. You can see the bottom two photographs here, that that, that structure also sits relatively close to Secconnet Drive.
No? Do we come up with an average of the?
We don't need an average because it's really not, that's not really an issue. And it, with having to deal with forty feet because it's a lot on the other side, that will work.
Okay.
So that's why we're, we're approving the, the permit request from the alteration or expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming structure. The board is well aware of the fact that criteria is whether or not the proposed addition in this case of the deck, it is not an enclosed deck, it's an open deck, whether or not that will create a condition that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, I suggest to the board that it doesn't create such a condition. Also, it is outside living space, it's not additional bedrooms, there wouldn't be additional parking required, and as I suggest to the board, given the topography of the lot, the distance of the lot line and the additional distance to the paved surface, that this addition will not require any additional setbacks in this particular instance. On the Massasoit side, we're not getting any closer to the sideline of our front yard because of the nature, the way the house is situated on the lot. Patrick is here, if you have any questions for Patrick, other than that, I really don't have much to add.
My concern is, it's approved as a deck, but if they want to change it to an addition down the road.
Well, you can put a condition, it can't be enclosed.
That's my question.
Yes, we can. We can condition.
But the next, if you have a sold, it could be that issue, that's what they're talking about. That's like anything else, the board, if they want it green, they can ask it to be green, you know, whatever.
And not enclosed, not enclosed without having to come back to the board, let's put it that way.
Correct. They would have to reapply.
Correct.
And then you'll be back.
Perhaps.
Let's read in our comments first. Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, I'm not gonna read them. Okay, would someone like to read in comments from conservation?
Sixty-six Massasoit Avenue, this project has been approved by the conservation commission. I have the building in mind here.
Yep.
Sixty-six Massasoit Avenue, the area is zone R three and is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen. This department has not seen the updated plan to make a determination. And then I have health.
Any other?
Health, the board of health, deck is not near septic components, no further comment.
Anybody in the audience have any comments? Please step up and state your name.
My name is Doug Semple, I live at forty-three Secconnet Drive. Which is this house right here.
Okay.
And we look, we look from our patio right directly at the deck. We're in favor of it. My wife is here and my next door neighbor Patricia Casey's here. We're very much in favor of people improving their property. I would like to say thank you very much for approving our variance. The house came out very nice and we're living there around now. But Pat and Sharon are very good neighbors and we expect it will be done very nicely. And anytime, like I said, anybody tries to improve the property of the neighborhood, we're all for it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any other questions or comments?
Do you have any comments about the archaeology? The digging, I know John usually does that.
The what?
About the digging, about if he come across anything.
Why, because of the inspections department?
Wasn't in a, yeah, was moderate or high?
I didn't see. Solicitor there.
R five.
Hi.
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 You can second put a comment in there.
You know that it's in a high sensitivity area, therefore, if there's any construction going on and you uncover anything of a sensitive nature, that you have to get in touch with the building department and stop what you're doing.
Bones, pottery.
Bones. All right. I make a motion.
Things happen.
It, it has happened. I make a motion that we approve sixty-six Massasoit Ave, owners Sharon and Patrick O'Connor, request for a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck to an existing single-family dwelling on a property located in an R three zoning district, map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Mass. The following condition, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of, whoops, that's the wrong one. The board has determined that the application meets all conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law forty-eight, section six, noting site plan of land revised plan on twelve-eleven, two thousand seventeen, to add easterly setbacks prepared for Patrick and Sharon O'Connor, showing the proposed deck assesses map seventy-two, parcel thirty, sixty-six Massasoit Ave, Mashpee, Mass., scale one inch equals twenty feet, dated August eleventh, two thousand seventeen by John Doyle, PLS five oh eight, five six three, nineteen ninety-four, one seventy Cloverfield Way, East Falmouth, Mass., signed by John Doyle on eight seventeen seventeen, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, and conditioned that the approval is for an open deck with no enclosure of the deck or roof structure above.
Without coming back to the board.
Without coming back to the board for a further approval.
Further review.
Further review.
Second.
Second. Brad, you're stepping down on this, I forgot to mention that earlier, so it'll be the five of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, here, here.
Look at this, he's got X's on there. We can't screw this up.
Could I get one more set, please?
They even print them out.
Wow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're all moving now.
And you were, when you come up?
Who seconded that?
Jim.
Jim. Okay, I just need another one of.
One more plan?
The book, not the book.
The book. Should give us the right book, yep.
Yep. You see?
I'm looking at this one, I think we should get a proof.
You scared me. Yeah, for everything.
Did you ask Mary Ann if you could use a red pencil?
I don't know, she, can I use a red pen? I've used a red pen the whole time.
You haven't said anything before. Too late now.
I only use red pens.
I'm gonna start over again.
Yeah.
Call those people back.
Well, it shows it's, it shows it's original.
Schoolteacher, I'll use red pens. That's all I buy.
This shows it's an original signature, that's all.
Is it photocopied well?
Yeah, that's right.
It does photocopy because I write in red all the time. That's all you get when you have a teacher.
Okay, Sharon, you'll be stepping down on this one, okay?
Not because you used the red pen.
All right.
Punishment.
I actually discussed this one with the kids. They had lots of opinions.
Jim, do you want to read the next one in, please?
Opening the hearing on four thirty-one Monascoy Road, owners Jeremy N. and Farhana R. Stevenson, trustees, request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a lap pool on property located in R three zoning district, map one twenty-four, parcel fifty-three, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
How did you get them all on one day, counselor?
It's not on there.
It's not on there.
We'll change that for you.
Yeah, do you give them a discount because they're all on one day?
Are you kidding?
Everything from here down?
I'll show these.
All this, the owner.
You're gonna have to do some sharing.
Okay.
That's right. Where's your mosing page?
God, that is on the brilliance.
That'd be pretty.
All set.
Jeremy and Farhana, trustees and owners of the property situated at four thirty-one Monascoy Road. Essentially, what we're doing here, if you've had the opportunity to go out, or you've had the opportunity to see the photographs that, that have been taken, there is a substantial raised patio structure on the rear of this property. And what we're talking about doing is we're talking about taking a portion of that structure out and replacing it with a lap pool, essentially removing a good portion of it and putting the lap pool there in place of it. And in essence, adding only about one hundred and ninety-five square feet of area by virtue of that lap pool, which is dimension ten by fifty-seven feet. So if you see on the colored plan that I have provided, the existing raised patio structure extends out and we are putting that lap pool basically within, for all practical purposes, that raised patio structure.
The fifty-foot buffer.
The reason that we are here is that that addition of one hundred and ninety-five or so square feet, which is in the right-hand corner of the pool, as it is adjacent to the Great River, on the Great River side of the property, which has been a lighter shade of green, that one hundred and ninety-five square feet is getting closer to the wetland resource area than what currently exists. Lot coverage is increasing slightly from eighteen point eight to nineteen point five percent, and the setback to the wetland resource area, which in this case is the salt marsh, we're going from what was previously, looks like thirty-six, down to thirty.
So it was already non-conforming?
Yes, and that's why we have applied for the relief under one seventy-four, section seventeen, because we have a non-conforming setback to the wetland resource area and we're making it a bit more non-conforming by virtue of this squaring off of that.
But no new non-conformities?
No, we are not creating any new, any new non-conformities. I would also point out that the project has been approved by the conservation commission.
I was gonna read that in, so.
And that, as a, as a general rule, that setback, that fifty-foot setback criteria from wetland, in large part, I believe, is intended to protect wetland resource areas. And as a general rule, conservation commission is vested with the authority to review issues as they relate to impact on wetlands. In this particular case, they reviewed this project, they determined that there would be no adverse impact on the wetland resource areas. They conditioned that approval. Substantial plantings were added to the plan to mitigate any potential impacts. Tom O'Neill, who designed the building and is designing this modification to that raised patio structure, is here if the board has any questions. And as I said, we're getting slightly closer to that wetland resource area, but the conservation commission has determined that we're not having an adverse impact. As such, I would suggest to the board that under one seventy-four seventeen, the substantial detriment criteria is thereby met by not creating any, any substantially detrimental condition than what would currently exist. And I think the conservation commission, of an order, order of condition reinforces that finding.
Along that line, I'll read in the conservation comments. This property has been approved by the conservation commission. So obviously, they did not have any issues with it. With some of the board of, board of health comments, no comment. Would somebody read in the building commissioners?
Four thirty-one Monascoy Road, the area is zone R three and is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. The property is in both the AE and the VE flood zone. The applicant is seeking a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen to allow for the construction of a lap pool. The board needs to determine if the proposed addition would make this single-family more non-conforming or not. Please note that this work is within the fifty-foot buffer, one seventy-four dash thirty-three, and there is no request for relief from this section of the bylaw.
I think the, the relief they're looking for is a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen, which allows them to alter, extend, or change a pre-existing non-conforming condition as long as we, as a board, determine that it's not more detrimental than what previously existed. And based on the comments from the conservation commission, I would suggest that we have to rely on them to determine whether or not this extension of a pre-existing non-conforming condition is more detrimental, and they don't feel it is, and therefore, I think this board should rely on the conservation commission to make that judgment. That's my opinion.
Was an order of conditions written from the, from the conservation commission?
Town department comments. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any comments from anybody in the audience? Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve four thirty-one Monascoy.
Who's not voting?
Jim, you're not voting.
No. Make a motion that we approve the written finding for four thirty-one Monascoy Road, owners Jeremy N. and Farhana R. Stevenson, trustees, request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a lap pool on property located in an R three zoning district, map one twenty-four, parcel fifty-three, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law forty-eight, section six, with noting proposed site design plan, owner of record Jeremy N. Farhana Stevenson, trustees, the four thirty-one Monascoy Road Realty Trust, Four Hampton Road, Lexington, Mass. zero-two-four-two-one, project proposed pool, four thirty-one Monascoy Road, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number one of one, dated September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, drawing file name, Monascoy, four thirty-one Stevenson Site, drawn by JV, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, revisions number one, eleven-three-seventeen, reduced size of proposed pool, MC, APR, MC. Revisions number 1, 11317, reduced size of proposed pool, MC, APR, MC. Number 2, 111617, reduced size of proposed pool by MC, APR, MC, stamped by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282, professional land surveyor. Also contains the revisions on 111517. I need that blanked out. I wanna know what it said. Revised mitigation planning locations, and then revision number 4 on 121317, revised lot coverage calculations, both by and approved by MC.
Do I have a sec?
That's it, sorry.
Brad Sutkins, all in favor?
Aye.
All set.
Does this qualify as an all-nighter for you? That's another story.
It was around the dawn of civilization, wasn't it?
Well, I worked for one community that would, it didn't matter, 1 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning, they wanted it done.
I wouldn't, when I was the chair of the appeals, the same thing, I used to limit the number of parents that you could have because of, once you get to 10 o'clock, it's not fair to the applicant.
No.
That's becoming mush. It just also.
Yeah. Okay, Brad, just stepping down on this one, okay? Jim, would you read the next? Opening of finding, 39 Wilson's Grove, petitioner John P. Park, trustee of the Pike, trustee of the Pike Family Trust, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompaneset Overlay District, map 118, parcel 85, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record, Pike Family Trust.
I believe I'm requested a continuance of this hearing until the January 10th meeting.
We're signing this, or are we just making it a normal continuance? You want a signed continuance?
Have to be. No.
That only has to be with time, a time constraint, but we'll do it this way.
Make the motion still?
Make a motion to continue to January 10th?
January 10th. Make a motion that we approve the continuation of 39 Wilson's Grove, petitioner John P. Pike, trustee of the Pike Family Trust, requesting a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on a property located in an R3 zoning district and Pompaneset Overlay District, map 118, parcel 85, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Pike Family Trust, to the January 10th hearing.
At the request of the petitioner?
At the request of the petitioner.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, continued.
And he's still not getting up.
No, no, it's fine.
And he's crying all the way to the bank.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, the last time.
It's all set. You're gonna have the last laugh. Wait till we get them all signed, and then we'll read in the last new hearing. When I was in school, I never had any red marks on.
Oh, you never got a red mark?
Yeah.
You got all As, huh?
Okay. Sharon, you're gonna step down on this, okay? Jim, would you read the next one? Opening, the hearing, at 65 Treasure Lane, owners David W. and Lauren A. Richards, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 46, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Change jackets, so we wouldn't know you.
Officially, for the record, my name is Kevin Corain, and I have the pleasure of representing David and Lauren Richardson in connection with their petition for a specific finding pursuant to section 174-17 of our zoning bylaw. And David is here with us this evening. If the board has any questions for David afterwards, through the presentation, I'm sure he'd be happy to respond to any questions that the board may have. What is being proposed in connection with this application, and I have presented you with my red remarks and attached or appended to my rewritten remarks, are the architectural elevations and the floor plans that have been prepared by Steve Cook, who's done the design work on this proposed addition. Essentially, what we have here is we have the addition of a second story to the structure, and you can see that it's a small one-story building. We're proposing to add a second floor to that building, and we're proposing to eliminate or remove the two decks that I have outlined here in orange on this plan. The decks would be removed, a second story would be added, and there would also be a new addition of a small front porch to that particular structure. The structure itself is non-conforming because it only sits 13.3 feet from the lot line that it shares with lot 146, and it only sits currently 29.6 feet from Treasure Lane. This is another one of those corner-type lots situated at the intersection of Treasure Lane and Captain's Row. It conforms with the front yard setback from Captain's Row as proposed, although it's only 39.1 feet, 1 foot, 1 1/9 of a foot short currently, but we're not increasing the non-conformity in any way. We are increasing slightly the non-conformity from 29.6 to 32 feet relative to that front porch, and we're not really increasing any other non-conforming other than the fact that we're going up a story. Again, just to reiterate, the board would take into account whether or not what we're proposing here creates a condition that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. I suggest to the board that the addition of a second story, as you can see from, I have included a couple of photographs from other two-story structures, including one right next door in the neighborhood, so having a two-story building in this neighborhood is not out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. And you can see that the building is quite properly set back from that curve, so that other concerns that the board might have in connection with the front yard setback and the inclusion of a two-story building at that front yard setback really doesn't come into play with this lot because there is so much, if you were to measure the front yard from the actual curve, we're well set back from that area so as not to create any site distance issues with either pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So I really, it's pretty straightforward. We're not increasing lot coverage by the fact that we're removing, by removing the decks, the existing lot coverage is actually dropping a bit from 12.8 to 11.1. So I suggest to the board that the board would be well within its discretion to make that requisite finding, that we are not creating a condition that is substantially more detrimental. We're not creating any need for additional parking, but we do have plenty of room on the site for additional parking if it were required. And I suggest to the board that the setbacks that are being proposed are more than adequate to provide the appropriate safeguards relative to pedestrian and vehicular travel.
So they're not touching the ground, their lot coverage is getting better. They're not getting it. The new porch is a little closer, but it's not an issue. No, it's not even getting.
Yeah, but the new porch is not part of the document.
Okay, well, the new porch isn't even, so they're only here because it's non-conforming, and it's that whole thing again. I got no issue with this.
You are increasing that non-conformity from 29 to 32, so that is one of the other reasons.
What I have listed, well, no, what I have, what the applicant submitted was, thought for construction of a second-floor addition, but nothing about.
New porch.
There you go.
Oh, that porch came in after the fact?
I really didn't, it was part of the plan that was submitted.
I'm just going by what's written.
What was published?
What was published?
But the setback requirement is 40 on the street, and he's non-conforming at 29, and his new is less, it's gonna be 32.
The new is less than the 29.
Yeah, so.
But the question is, what was published?
Oh.
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 Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
And I think that would only be an issue if I were increasing that non-conforming setback to the road. I'm not increasing the non-conforming setback to the road. I'm less than what the current setback is to the road. So it's not a situation where we are increasing a non-conforming condition. We are within the confines of an already existing non-conforming condition.
Well.
Do you have a copy of the ad?
Yes, it's the hearing.
It's the hearing. That's what she just says, the hearing.
It doesn't list what, just as a written finding for non-conformity.
No, the ad states what they're looking for.
Just for the second floor? It doesn't say about the floor.
Second floor. Second floor. I believe the advertisement in the newspaper says what the actual petition is for, correct?
I don't know.
I'm willing to take my chances on a prospective appeal. And maybe we'll come back for the porch, but I.
I, as a one-board member, have no issue with it, because he's not getting any more.
In fact, if you read the bylaw, if you're not increasing the non-conforming, I think that's a determination that the building inspector can make.
Well, we're trying to get it. That's why I brought that up, because we're trying to make it that way.
Well, you don't have to make it that way, because that's the way it reads now.
I don't think it totally does.
The first sentence reads that way.
Talk to counsel, then counsel's got a different opinion.
Oh, well, then lots of counsels have different opinions.
We're trying to fix that, so some of the stuff.
If you're, well, there's no point in debating that issue now.
Yeah, all right, so I don't have an issue with it either, so, but.
I just pointed it out. It's in your hands. I made my comments, so it's up to you all.
I'm gonna make a motion, oh, I'll let you finish, I'm sorry. I wanna go. Comments?
Any other comments from the, from departmental comments? Have they all been read in?
Jumped right into that.
I'll read the conservation, not in wetlands jurisdiction. The floor plans have been reviewed and approved for three bedrooms. This is not an increase in flow, staying at the three bedrooms, so no septic work inspection, no change in footprint or upgrade is required.
I'll read the inspections department. You have more?
No, I kind of misread that, but it's, I read all the words, but it didn't come out right.
I like that, I read all the words. Inspections Department. The area zoned R3 is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a written finding under section 174-17 to allow for the construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The board needs to determine if the proposed addition would make the single-family more non-conforming or not. Please note that they also proposed a new covered porch that is eight feet short from the 40-foot front setback from Treasure Lane. No relief has been requested for the proposed new covered porch. Eight feet? All right?
That's everybody.
There's no other?
Any other comments from the audience? Any other board members? Seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 65 Treasure Lane, owners David W. and Lauren A. Richards, requesting a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 46, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law 40A, section 6, noting a site plan, David and Lauren Richard, number 65 Treasure Lane, Mashpee, Mass., scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, date July 26, 2017, prepared by Warwick and Associates Incorporated, 63 County Road, Box 801, North Falmouth, Mass., drawn by L.M.R.J.W., date 4, 2017, checked by, it's blank, sheet 1 of 1, P Land Project, 2004 SS 17017 DWG, SS 17017 SPDWG, stamped by Gary S. LeBree, number 40039, registered professional land surveyor, noting the house plans, new addition remodeling for Richards' residence, 65 Treasure Lane, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Katuit Bay Design LLC, scale 1 quarter inch equals 1 foot, date 7/11/2017, drawing number A1, first floor plan, A2, second section floor plan, A3, front elevation, right elevation, A4, rear elevation, left elevation, conditioned upon all town department comments read into the record.
And also the floor plan, the plan that was filed that you've already read into the record?
Yeah.
Indicates not only the addition described in the applicant's request, but also.
The site plan also, in the applicant's request, also includes the new porch, covered porch.
There we go.
On the, I don't know what side of the property, front side of the property.
Side of the property, as displayed on the plan.
As displayed on the plan by.
Already read into the record.
Warwick Associates, already read into the record.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, we're gonna need sets here.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Another book.
Another book. I keep throwing down. Got your house plans?
Yep. Yep.
My uncle came before this board, before he died.
Oh, he's folding everything up.
On night that he was charging him.
He might be done.
It's crazy. 2,000, just to present it. If it didn't get, if it got approved, 3,000. If it didn't get approved, you were locked into that.
Sorry.
Apply for, apply for the addition.
He made a big payday.
And I applied for a second floor. Would we put the advertised reason replaced if it described every element of the reason replaced?
I can, we can, this is not the time and place where I, we, I can argue this.
I'm sure you can.
And I'm also capable.
I'm sure Kevin wants to stay longer.
Oh, right. And I'm also capable of appealing it too, so.
At $400, now who cares?
We covered it in the motion.
That's it, as long as it's covered. Counselor, because if I get a home inspector, side of south, they're gonna say, well, how did this or the bank one, how did we make it through the business?
$200, no.
Yeah, huh, yeah, yeah.
Home inspectors, Jeremy.
My oldest son's a lawyer and dentist.
We get the inquiries.
Unbelievable money he makes.
Home inspectors, banks, other attorneys.
This is the national stuff.
All right. In the middle.
And you love it every minute of it.
Okay, who sat on that hearing?
Go away, you'll be next.
Me. I know it.
Yeah.
I don't know. Who sat on that one? We look at the, who signed it? Who sat on that one? Who didn't sit on that one?
She didn't sign on that one.
Okay, Sharon, you're sitting on the next one, okay?
Who's in the next one?
There's a, there is other business.
Other business.
Brad, you're gonna step down, okay? Other business.
Under, under business, 16 Bluff Avenue, a variance.
Okay. Do we have the applicant here or no?
Yes, the applicant's here.
Okay. What this is referring to is, if, if you all recall, this, this applicant came in before and was proposing to do some renovations to accommodate handicap, building a new handicap bathroom, I believe. And we asked lots of questions and it ended up that, kind of at our insistence, the applicant withdrew without prejudice. Subsequent to that, the zoning commissioner, building commissioner came to me and said that he had reviewed the plans, had taken an interest in this, and had actually gone out and really done an in-depth analysis of what this was all about and suggested that the board might want to reopen this and take another look at it because there are some mitigating circumstances associated with this particular case because it is due to trying to accommodate a handicapped person. And I think that we could probably take a look at it and come to the conclusion that there is a hardship involved and therefore that potentially a variance may be appropriate in this very special case. I don't want this, the board or anybody to think that this is something that we're just making changes to our criteria for variances, but I think this does warrant us taking a special look at it for these circumstances. So I'm gonna ask the building commissioner to present some of his findings and maybe a recommendation to the board.
Good evening. The chair outlined everything for you. What wasn't added on to the fact was, was recommended for the applicant to meet with me, to sit down and take a look at drawings for, to see what it would take to make it in compliance, getting that 15-foot setback. So we've met on several occasions. So what I'm going to show you right now are the results of those meetings.
Thank you.
Sharon, you're in on this, right?
Was this for me to pass?
That's for you, that's your, your pass.
Brad is.
I'm not hitting.
Make comments though.
Right.
Everybody gets a trophy.
Everybody gets a trophy. So. Basically on the cover sheet, we're seeing as a site plan. So you're seeing is, to meet the 15-foot setback, you're looking at a proposed addition, one end being 5.2 feet, the other end being 4.6 feet. That is what will fit in this, on this lot. Now also remember, take a look at that property line. It's skewed. It's not straight. So you got, you got an issue here with the shape of the lot. On the next page, says right on the top, was the applicant's original proposal. He was looking for basically a six-foot wide, 13-foot long addition. Now those dots you're seeing represent the property line. This is the property line, so it would have cut this. You're talking about, you know, a couple of feet over into it. Now take a look at the original plan. First of all, let's look at the size of the door going into the shower area. You're looking at 34, 36-inch door. I want you to remember this. It's very important. Also what I want you to take a look at is look at the distance between, from the wall to the toilet. That's 39. Those two are key indications, which is gonna make my case for you all to reconsider this applicant's application. The next page is an example of trying to meet compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Option A.
Option A. The door just dropped down to 24 inches. Keep that in mind. The distance between the front of the toilet to the wall is 22 inches. Keep that in mind. Now, next page, option B. Here you have a 24-inch door. And you've got 22 inches from the front of the toilet to the wall. Now look also how tight that building is to that property line, I mean, not property line, but mean the 15-foot. It's like you're right on the edge. What I want to give everybody now is a brief training on the handicap code in Massachusetts, which is the AAB.
ADA.
ADA.
Oh, we don't do ADA. AAB.
Okay.
ADA is federal, more stricter.
Oh.
So if you really want to go that route, we can.
It'll get bigger.
Go with Massachusetts, what I.
Go by.
So. It's a two-sided document. On this side, it shows your typical dimensions for a residential bathroom. On the back shows you what the code requires for a handicapped door.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Thanks, I'm gonna go home.
You're going to?
Actually.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm gonna give you copies of my research in the AAB code dealing with handicap, so we can all follow along. And then we're gonna tie this all in together and then explain my case.
Thank you.
Okay, there. All right, as it says on the top of the page of the handout I gave you, these requirements are per 521 CMR, the Architectural Access Barrier Board Code. 4.2, doors shall comply with 521 CMR 26.6 width through 521 CMR 26.11 door hardware width, all, it's of 26.5 width. All doors shall have a clear net open not less than 32 inches. So if you go looking at options A and B, the door doesn't make it. You don't have it. So right there, you're not even meeting the handicap requirements. 26.6, maneuvering clearance shall be provided on both sides of the door. To get this figure, we go back to four, 42.3, which states that the minimum clear floor space is a minimum of 30 inches by 48 inches. Once again, option A and B doesn't cut it.
Nope.
42.6.5, clear floor space and one of the things shall be a 30, 30 inches by 40 inches. Once again, option A and B does not work. So the only thing.
Option A and B works for the bylaw.
Bylaw.
But it doesn't work for the handicap.
Not for handicap accessibility.
So. Why I'm asking this for the board to reconsider, because the original plan complies with the handicap accessibility requirements.
Right.
And if you go by the bylaw, you don't have the clearance between the toilet and the wall.
Right.
You don't have the clearance from the sink to the wall.
So the only.
You don't have the clearance for the door to get into the shower. You can't get a wheelchair in there.
You can't get a wheelchair in, in the door, in the door less than 32.
So I think, I think what the building commissioner is, is saying and proving to us is the only way to accommodate a handicapped bathroom for this particular property is to grant a variance, because there's no other physical way to do it.
And I've reviewed these, all these plans, I've reviewed what the state requires, and it's a pretty minor variance that they're requesting. It's not a huge variance to make it work, and I think the bathroom's being made pretty much as minimal as possible to make it handicap accessible. They're not making it overly big, they're making it just large enough to accommodate a handicapped person. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there's an overwhelming hardship in this case. There's a handicapped person that I think should be able to live with his family or his caregiver at home. And my, my gut is that we should grant this variance because of the hardship involved and that the options displayed by the building inspector would not fit the laws of 521 CMR.
It's clear to me that the applicant left this meeting and did his due diligence to try and come up with a solution so that a variance would not be required. He worked with the building commissioner on several options to avoid having to need a variance. None of those options, as, as already stated by Mike, will work. They, they correct the issue of requiring a variance, but they do not allow you to build a bathroom that meets code for handicap. So I'm in agreement with, with you, Jim, and I'm in agreement with the building commissioner that this is a very special circumstance, there's a hardship involved, this is very unusual for us, it doesn't quite meet the normal criteria associated with a variance, but I think in this particular case, this special circumstance, I would recommend that we, we go, we approve this. I'll leave it up to the board to vote, but I think what we need to do here is, unless this.
You have to open.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. I was gonna, I, I just got the original, the original thing. I think we've got to reopen that.
How do we do that? Well, I just wanna make, I just wanna make one other comment.
Sure.
This is in, on Bluff Ave, if you're familiar with the area, they're very small lots, there's a lot of non-conforming homes down there, a lot closer than the variance he's asking for, there's, there's properties there that are way closer to the lot lines than what that is.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's a pretty minor variance.
Right.
It's just one other comment. So.
I guess I'm, are we in a position, can we determine what the variance is that he's requesting?
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if.
You just go by the past application, because it's, it's reopening that application.
Can we do that without an advertisement?
Yes.
Yes, we're reopening.
We're reopening it, because they withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Which is why I'm here to see if the board will reconsider their decision, have to work with the applicant.
The original, the, the original thing on, did it request certain? Did it request a variance of certain numbers of feet? How about that written one that you had, the, the actual one that was filled out in the hand, is it in this?
Yeah. He shouldn't have to come by.
Yes.
Let us struggle on our own.
0.5 feet.
That look like it? I went to tell them, yeah.
1.2 feet side setback relief. 1.2 feet side setback relief?
There you go.
Yeah.
Does that sound right to you, Scott?
Yeah, because it was. No, 1.8, I think.
He had a front and a side addition that day.
I just wrote it down.
Now he had two different variances that day.
Right, the board approved the written finding.
This is going from.
This is for a variance.
Yeah, this one is the.
Oh, here it is, I wrote it right here. Worst case is 1.5, one, yeah, 1, 1.5 feet, intense.
1.5?
That's the worst case. Nope. 1.5 there, that's 5.2. Oh, yes, that crooked line.
It's the crooked line.
Yes, the crooked line's throwing me off. Yeah, it's .8 at one point, and it's 1.5 at the other point, so I guess.
So it's 1.5.
1.5 is the worst case, which is.
1.5 feet. So I think that is what we will, we will open the. This, this hearing, open that up, that request up.
We open the hearing for 16 Bluff Ave owner William J. Peros requests a variance of a side yard setback under section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow the construction of a six-foot by 13-foot addition to the existing single-family dwelling on a property located in an R3 zoning district and pomp and assid overlay district, map 112, parcel 93, Mashpee, Mass.
Mr. Chairman?
The request is for.
The request for a variance was for a 1.5.
Sorry. Foot side yard setback.
Not to be picky, but I think we ought to make it a reopening.
Fine, reopening.
Is that okay?
Reopening.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just a guy who reads.
And.
So we don't have advertising.
The variance would be for 1.5 feet, 1.6 inches side setback on the.
1 foot 6 inch. On the side setback.
Right side of the home, right side of the property, not sure if that's east or west.
Right side setback. Right.
And do we have any exhibits we can include in this?
I don't think there's any comments from any.
No, I meant exhibits, like drawings.
I would recommend the information I had given you.
How about the packet that we got from the building commissioner? Right?
Because what does that make a part of the?
As part of this current ruling.
Correct. Because in there you'll have the reason why it's a hardship, because you got the original proposal, option A and option B, and it'll show why.
I got it.
Along with the, my review. Yes, along with my review of the handicap code.
We'll include that.
Did we make mention of the hardship too?
Well, that's what his packet is.
Oh, okay, okay.
But.
I don't have to mention what you put in your packet. I mean.
Basically say. Just put a review from, by the building commissioner.
Building commissioner.
Right, on the informational packet supplied by the building commissioner.
Which includes.
Includes.
The AAB guidelines.
AAB.
And descriptions.
AAB.
As well as.
For handicap accessibility.
Various scenarios for meaning compliance.
Original plan and two additional options.
We also mentioned the shape of the lot.
Sketched, as well as described.
And plans showing.
Scott, did you get that, also the shape of the lot? For the slope?
Odd, odd, odd sized shape.
Yeah.
Odd shaped lot.
Hardship.
Hardship, it's an odd shaped lot, and it's a hardship due to a handicap bathroom needing to be installed.
I mean, I think the building commissioner's done an awful lot of work for 1.5 feet variance.
Well, I'm just trying to justify to the board why this does meet the requirements.
If someone calls and complains and says, why did they get a 1.5 variance, and say their hardship was...
Every case...
Lot size, and, yeah, every case is individual.
Handicap.
Between, they did a handicap accessible, we have something to back it up.
And just for edification, also be aware of that handicap ramps are exempt from zoning.
That's right.
Should I make note of that?
No, no, no.
No, we don't.
Really? There you go, perfect. So now we recovered if someone complains.
Right, because a lot of times it's because of the, the run can really go quite a bit into a yard, it can take up a lot because you have to have a landing and all that, and then, you know, switch backs and all that, so it's a good possibility that, that, you know, you may have set off at 45 feet, you know, being away, but then you're, you're into it another five feet, 10 feet, you just don't know.
That's a good point. All right, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance for 16 Bluff Ave. owner William J. Peros requesting a variance of a side yard setback under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a six-foot by 13-foot addition in an existing single-family dwelling on a property located in an R3 zoning district and pomp and assid overlay district, map 112, parcel 93, Mashpee, Mass. I have to note that 1.5. The variance is for 1.5 feet, correct?
For the side yard.
On the side yard setback.
Right side yard setback.
Right side yard setback. This is under the following conditions, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under the Mass. General Law 40A, Section 10. We're noting a certified plot plan proposed addition for 16 Bluff Ave., Mashpee, Mass., 02649, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Summerfield Park, 800 Falmouth Road, Suite 301C, Mashpee, Mass., drawn by JB, checked by MC, dates September 18, 2017, sheet 1 of 1, signed by Matthew J. Costa, number 52282, professional land surveyor. The board issued the variance at an amount of 1.5 feet, continue, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, which...
They previously were read.
They were previously read in. Conditioned on the informational packets supplied by the building commissioner, including the AAB guidelines for handicap accessibility and plans showing hardship as a handicap accessible bathroom and the hardship as an odd shaped lot.
Well, I would say the hardship for a handicap bathroom to meet the 15-foot...
The AAB guidelines.
Right.
To make sure that the hard, well, the hardship being that the handicap accessible bathroom meets the AAB guidelines.
Correct.
For...
Second.
There we go.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you.
Thank you, that's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work you did.
I think you did more work on that one than other people did on five.
Great job.
Don't thank us, that's the right thing to do.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
It's the right thing to do.
Sorry you had to, it takes so long to get there.
You do have a hat, Mr. Inspector.
I like the TV's on.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Okay. No, just like, no matter how we tried working it out, it just wasn't jiving.
Yeah, I looked at that thoroughly, I'm like, I don't, that's the minimum, he didn't try to overdo it.
No.
With the size of it, if he was trying to put an addition on for a bedroom or something, I'd say, I don't know, we got something there, you know, maybe he's just trying to...
Only one is a bathroom.
Yeah, he's making it as, pretty much as minimal as he could, within a couple inches.
Is he the caregiver?
I think it's his parent.
Father.
His mother and father.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The mother is in her 80s and is already in the wheelchair, and it's not long for the father to be in the same situation.
Tough.
So...
No issue with that.
It's a tough lot, that's...
Well, that's pomp and assid, they're all, it's, and there's a lot more non-conforming than that, just on that road alone.
And it was the right thing to do.
Yeah.
You're right, absolutely.
There was absolute hardship as a handicap accessible bathroom.
Yep. Okay.
Approved.
Next, other business.
Approved the November 8 meeting minutes.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Scott?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
No, I, I, I don't want to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I got everyone's...
Good night.